All right. Good evening, everyone. Today's Tuesday, January 25th, 2022. This is the regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Zoning Board of Adjustment and reorganization meeting. Mr. Avelloni, would you please call us to order?
I will. Thank you, Irene. The following meeting is being conducted by electronic means in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, amended 2020, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct meetings electronically during a state of emergency. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press. All notices are on file with the Board's Secretary. In addition, a notice regarding this virtual meeting and instructions were published in the Coaster and is available to the public on the City of Asbury Park website. The notice and conduct of this meeting in accordance with the guidelines for virtual meetings issued by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. Please note, and I'll review this again for everybody because it's been a while since we've been doing Zoom, all microphones of public users are muted until the public question or comment period. If you would like to speak during that time only, please use the Raise the Hand button in Zoom if on a computer or dial star nine if on a telephone. Your name or last four digits or your phone number will be called when it is your turn to speak. If at any time during a question you are deemed to be out of line or topic, we reserve the right to mute your microphone and we'll make an announcement that this has occurred. During the public comments section only, the public will have four minutes to speak. Please identify yourself before you speak at all times. This meeting is being recorded and will be available to view via APTV. Thank you.
All right, and I will take role. Daniel Harris?
Yeah.
Brittany Ashman?
Yeah.
Tim Slick?
Tim was here.
I'm here.
Thank you. It takes a little while. Jill Potter?
Here.
Wendy Glassman?
Here.
Bonina?
Here.
Russell Lewis?
Here.
And Christopher Avelloni?
Here.
Thank you, everyone. And before we get started, Jack, did you want to put these exhibits in?
Yeah, let's, this is the affidavit publication for the meeting tonight?
This is the, this is the affidavit of publication for the 2022 zoning board meeting dates.
Okay.
Which I've, I've noticed and indicated that they are virtual until further notice.
Okay.
And that was published on?
Twenty-second day of?
Sorry, December 22nd, 2021. Okay? And then the next one is, I'm sorry, the previous one was in the Coaster and this is the same notice in the Asbury Park Press of the 2022 virtual meetings of zoning board, published on January 15th, 2022. And that is Exhibit B2. And then the final exhibit is Exhibit B3, and this is the notice for tonight's meeting that was published in the Coaster and specifies the applicants before us this evening.
Okay. Good.
Okay. Thank you. And I'll put the agenda on our, on the screen for everyone. Take it away, Mr. Avelloni.
All right. So just going off the agenda, I'd just like to thank the appointments and reappointments of Dan Harris, Jill Potter, and Bonnie Knott. Thank you and welcome back. And I guess the best to start with the annual board reorganization.
One moment. May I, may I interject? I'm sorry. Dan, Jill, and Bonnie, do you have oaths of office?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay. Can you hold it up and show me with your signature on it, Dan, please?
Oh, I'll sign it. Hold on.
Okay, you can sign that and then hold it up.
Jack, can you see all of them on your screen right now?
Not yet. I do see Dan, so that's good. We'll get that in the record and get it over to Irene. So you are officially now reappointed as a member of the board and you would be agreed to abide by that oath of office, correct?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Let's go right up. Jill, how about you?
I don't believe I saw that. My bad.
Oh, that's okay, Jill. It's actually in your packet. I printed it out for you.
You did? Because I didn't see that.
Well, when you get one, sign it.
I went through the packet, Irene. I'm sorry.
Yeah, sign it. Send it over to Irene with a copy to me.
Okay.
Okay, and same for Bonnie.
I have mine.
Oh, okay. I can't see you. I only have five.
Bonnie, if you speak, he can see you.
Hi. Can you see me now?
Yes, I can. All right. So we've got two, two signatures on documents and you've read the oath of office, I'm sure, before you signed it.
Yes.
And do you agree to abide by the, the terms of that oath?
I do.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we just need to get Jill's.
Yeah, I don't believe one was included. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You're reappointed. We just need your oath. You're still officially a board member.
All right. Thank you.
All right, Christopher, now you can go with your temporary appointments.
Okay. So I guess we'll start with a nomination.
We can do all three at once.
We can do all three at once?
Sure. Just, we were just doing this for the purpose of getting us rolling and getting, getting the new year started. So one motion for three, the three people with a second and a voice vote would be fine.
Okay. Well.
I'm going to go on the board meeting. I'll call you back.
Oh, all right.
Mr. Harris, you're not muted, just so you know.
Oh, Monday.
So we need a motion to appoint someone as temporary chair. I assume I'd be the temporary board attorney since there's no other attorneys in the room or in the session and Irene would be our secretary. So could if somebody do that just for the purpose of having us get rolling?
I will nominate Chris Avelloni as temporary chair, Mr. Cervico for temporary board attorney, and Irene for temporary board secretary.
Second?
Can we get Jill Potter?
And I'll, okay.
Okay, great. So I have a motion by Russell Lewis and a second by Jill Potter. And Daniel Harris, how do you vote?
Yes.
Brittany Ashman?
Yes.
Tim Slick?
Yes.
Jill Potter?
Yes.
Wendy Glassman?
Yes.
Bonnie Knott?
Yes.
Russell Lewis?
Yes.
And Christopher Avelloni?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Board, next would be your executive session.
Yes.
Motion for executive session. There is a written resolution in the possession of the board secretary, which can be completed afterwards. But so you, and you can do this by voice vote. You don't have to go through the roll. Just need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for the executive session. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. So Irene, you can send the board into exec.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Just give me one second. So what, so just to, just to review, I don't know if you guys remember how to do this, but you're going to leave this current meeting. You're going to press the leave button and make sure that you've left the meeting. And you're, and I'm emailing everyone the link to the executive session meeting now.
Irene, just let me interrupt you for one second, just so everyone understands. This is only for the board members. This is not for anyone in the public.
Or the?
Or the professionals.
Staff as well. We stay out of it.
Yes, only the zoning board members. Okay. So I've emailed you the link to the executive session. You're going to join that meeting. There's no host in there, but you'll be able to start the meeting. And when you're finished, just, and just leave the meeting. And you're going to use your link from this evening to come back to this meeting, which was sent. You should have a link at exactly 6:00 PM in your email. All right?
Okay.
All right.
That makes sense. All right. Thank you, everyone.
Good luck.
Bye.
See you in a few.
All right. And everyone else that's here, try not to say anything obscene. Or if you do, at least make it funny.
Yeah, make it a joke.
Yeah. And I will try to type. All right.
All right, we're coming back, Jack.
Okay.
I have to, Irene, can you call us back to order if we're all here?
Yes, sir. I think there's still a couple trickling in.
By the way, Brittany, I think congratulations are in order, are they not?
Thank you.
Oh, right. Old married lady now.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
No, congratulations. That's for me. Thank you.
Did you go to the Caribbean after all, Brittany?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I was telling the rest of the board members when we were in the session when we were waiting on you guys. But yeah, we were worried because with COVID and flights and everything, but we had no trouble with airlines. So.
Where did you go?
Cancun.
Oh, nice.
South of Cancun, actually, about hours south. So.
Very nice.
And then we came back here and it was like negative 10 degrees. I had like a horrible cold. I think it's because the, the change in weather. My body's like, what? But no, it was great. Thank you, everyone.
Congratulations.
Yes, indeed.
Okay, um, let's get back. I think everyone is here. Mr. Daniel Harris?
I'm here.
Brittany Ashman?
Here.
Tim Slick?
Here.
Jill Potter?
Here.
Wendy Glassman?
Here.
Bonnie Knott?
Here.
Russell Lewis?
Here.
And Christopher Avelloni?
Here.
Thank you, everyone. Welcome back.
All right. So we have some housekeeping issues. We have to do some nominations and I'll ask for a nomination for chair.
I would like to nominate Chris Avelloni for chairman.
I'll second.
I have a nomination by Russell Lewis and a second by Brittany Ashman. Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Brittany Ashman?
Yes.
Tim Slick?
Yes.
Jill Potter?
Yes.
Wendy Glassman?
Yes.
Bonnie Knott?
Sorry. Yes.
Thank you. And Russell Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you. And congratulations, Mr. Avelloni. Thank you for having us for one more session term, I should say.
Oh, it's my honor. And I'll make a nomination. I'm sorry?
No, nothing, nothing. I'm drinking.
I'll make a nomination for Russell Lewis for vice chair.
I'll second.
All right. I will, the ladies first will take a second by Brittany Ashman and a nomination by Christopher Avelloni. Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Brittany Ashman?
Yes.
Tim Slick?
Yes.
Jill Potter?
Yes.
Wendy Glassman?
Yes.
Bonina?
Yes.
And Christopher Avelloni?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
And I'll nominate Irene Gasparian for board secretary. I wish you very much a happy nomination, Irene.
Oh, thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a nomination by Christopher Avelloni and a second by Russell Lewis. Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Brittany Ashman?
Yes.
Tim Slick?
Yes.
Jill Potter?
Yes.
Wendy Glassman?
Yes.
Bonina?
Yes.
Russell Lewis?
Yes.
And Christopher Avelloni.
Wholeheartedly, yes.
Thank you, Chris.
And I'll make a nomination for Jack Cervico for board attorney. I'll second.
Thank you. I have a nomination by Christopher Avelloni and a second by Russell Lewis and a third by me and Daniel Harris.
Yes.
Brittany Ashman?
Yes.
Tim Slick?
Yes.
Jill Potter?
Yes.
Wendy Glassman?
Yes.
Bonnie Knott?
Yes.
Russell Lewis?
Yes.
And Christopher Avelloni.
Yes. And thank you so much for your support always, Mr. Cervico. You're a great help.
Thank you for having me back, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
This will be year 28.
Wow. Impressive.
All right. So we have a new one. We're going to make a nomination for the Beekman Attorneys as conflict attorney.
I'll second that, but have we, have we spoken to them? Have we, have we offered it to them? Or do we know, do we need to go through this before we speak to them?
They, I know they'll take it. They'll, they'll be happy to, they'll be happy to accept the position. I've had a relationship with them, as you know, for years, and I've always brought them in whenever there was a conflict or I happened to be away. And other times when they did represent applicants before the board, they've done, in my opinion, after 45 years of doing this, they've done an excellent job. They're very thorough, knowledgeable, and they have, they're very mannerless. It's nice to see lawyers that are nice and do a good job.
Now, we, we all approve of them and like them. I just didn't know that we, I was under the impression that we hadn't reached out to them yet. So I, I was just curious about us nominating them prior to making an overture professionally to them. But I'll second it.
Okay. I have a nomination by Christopher Avelloni and a second by Russell Lewis. Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Brittany Ashman?
Yes.
Tim Slick?
Yes.
Jill Potter?
Yes.
Wendy Glassman?
Yes.
Bonnie Knott?
Yes.
Russell Lewis?
Yes.
And Christopher Avelloni?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Moving down the line, I will nominate Clark, Katon, and Hints as board planner. Welcome back, Donna.
I will second it.
Thank you. I have a nomination by Christopher Avelloni and a second by Jill Potter. Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Brittany Ashman?
Yes.
Tim Slick?
Yes.
Jill Potter?
Yes.
Wendy Glassman?
Yes.
Bonina?
Yes.
Russell Lewis?
Yes.
And Christopher Avelloni?
Yes.
Thank you.
And for conflict planner, I'll make a nomination for TNM Associates.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a nomination by Christopher Avelloni and a second by Russell Lewis. Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Brittany Ashman?
Yes.
Tim Slick?
Yes.
Jill Potter?
Yes.
Wendy Glassman?
Yes.
Bonina?
Yes.
Russell Lewis?
Yes.
And Christopher Avelloni?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I will make a nomination for Insight as board engineer.
I'll second it.
Okay, I will take.
Welcome back, Doug and Jason, who's not here tonight.
Yeah, welcome. And I'll take Jill Potter as a second. Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Brittany Ashman?
Yes.
Tim Slick?
Yes.
Jill Potter?
Yes.
Wendy Glassman?
Yes.
Bonina?
Yes.
Russell Lewis?
Yes.
And Christopher Avelloni?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I'll nominate TNM as conflict board engineer.
I'll second.
Okay. I have a nomination by Christopher Avelloni, second by Russell Lewis. Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Brittany Ashman?
Yes.
Tim Slick?
Yes.
Jill Potter?
Yes.
Wendy Glassman?
Yes.
Bonina?
Yes.
Russell Lewis?
Yes.
And Christopher Avelloni?
Yes.
Thank you.
So for board recording services, Irene, would that be APTV?
It is. We, we nominated them last year as well as the official recording service of the zoning.
Okay. So I will nominate APTV as the official board recording services.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a nomination by Christopher Avelloni and a second by Russell Lewis. Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Brittany Ashman?
Yes.
Tim Slick?
Yes.
Jill Potter?
Yes.
Wendy Glassman?
Yes.
Bonnie Knott?
Yes.
Russell Lewis?
Yes.
And Christopher Avelloni?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I will nominate the Coaster and the Asbury Park Press as the official zoning board newspapers for 2022.
I'll second.
Thank you. Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Brittany Ashman?
Yes.
Tim Slick?
Yes.
Jill Potter?
Yes.
Wendy Glassman?
Yes.
Bonnie Knott?
Yes.
Russell Lewis?
Yes.
And Christopher Avelloni?
Yes. So I'm assuming everyone had a chance to look at the zoning board calendar and has made their comments and provided them to Arenas. So I will nominate, or I will make a motion to adopt the 2022 zoning board meeting schedule.
I'll second.
Okay, I will take a nomination or a motion by Christopher Avelloni and a second by Daniel Harris. And Daniel Harris, how do you vote?
Yes.
Brittany Ashman?
Yeah.
Tim Slick?
Yes.
Jill Potter?
Yes.
Wendy Glassman?
Yes.
Bonnie Knott?
Yes.
Russell Lewis?
Yes.
And Christopher Avelloni?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of December 14th, 2021.
I'll make a second.
Thank you. Who was the second? I'm sorry.
Brittany?
Brittany, me or Russell?
All right, I'll take Brittany. So I have a motion by Christopher Avelloni and a second by Brittany Ashman. And I believe everyone was in attendance for that meeting except for Bonnie. Correct me if I'm mistaken, except for you. Okay. So all in favor, say aye.
Can I interrupt? Can I interrupt? I'm sorry.
Sure.
I, is that the meeting in whole, the minutes? Because there's portions of that that I, I was recused from.
You can still vote to.
Okay, just make it short.
Yeah.
You're eligible.
Thank you, Jill. Any opposed? All right. Minutes of the December 14th, 2021 regular meeting approved.
All right. So we have two applications tonight. The first application will be carried. So I'll make a motion to carry the 503 Eighth Avenue application with new notice to March 8th, 2022.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a.
Any interim, I will inform Mr. Carris of the law. I'll reiterate the law regarding who has to be noticed.
Thank you, Jack.
Okay.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Christopher Avelloni and a second by Daniel Harris. Daniel Harris, how are you vote?
Yes.
Brittany Ashman?
Yes.
Tim Slick?
Yes.
Jill Potter?
Yes.
Wendy Glassman?
Yes.
Bonina?
Yes.
Russell Lewis?
Yes.
And Christopher Avelloni?
Yes.
By the way, Irene, are we having the alternates? Do we have one alternate?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I've, I've just been taking.
I get it. No, you're exhausted. I get it.
Yeah.
Sorry.
But yeah, sorry, Bonnie. We don't, we don't have to take your vote. So the application for 503 Eighth is carried to March 8th, 2022 with further notice. And we don't know yet if that meeting will be virtual or in person, but you will be noticed accordingly. And everyone that's here for that, for that application, I'm sorry, they are not being heard tonight.
All right. So we finally can come to an application.
Yes, indeed.
Mr. Needen, 830 Dunleavy Street.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Needen.
Good evening.
Mr. Needen, would you please do me a favor? I assume you're going to be testifying on your own behalf. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony about to given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please, you can lower your hand, state your name, spell it for us. And I assume you are the homeowner and applicant. Is that correct?
That is correct. My name is Justin Needen, N-E-D-E-N. I reside and own 830 Dunleavy Street in Asbury Park, New Jersey. I am in attendance tonight to apply for a bulk variance on my home.
Mr. Needen, are you going to present any other witnesses for yourself or just, just yourself?
Just me.
Okay. All right. So please begin. Let us, I'm sorry, Jack?
I just said the floor is, I'm sorry, the meeting's wrong.
Thank you. I appreciate the.
Oh, wait, let's, sorry. I'm, I'm wrong. Sorry for interrupting. Start off the year on the wrong foot. We have Donna Miller down here who's unmuting, is waving her hand. She needs to be sworn in. And so does Doug because there may be some discussion between the staffers as well as you. Doug and Donna, please raise your right hand, right hands. Do you solemnly swear the testimony about to given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yeah. I do.
Doug does. Please state your names for the record and your affiliation with the board.
Donna Miller, Clark, Katon, Hints, board planner.
Thank you.
Doug Quelland, Insight Engineering, board engineer.
Thank you. Okay. Sorry for the interruption, everyone.
Thank you, Jack. All right. Please proceed, Mr. Needen. From what I understand, you're looking to add a small structure to the back of your home.
That is correct. I currently own a home. It's about 1,400 square feet. It's a three-bedroom, one-bath home. All bedrooms and bathroom are located on the second floor of the home. I am proposing in front of the board, in addition, on the first floor of my home, to accompany a full, full bathroom with accessibility to the rear of the yard, as well as the existing porch and deck on the rear of the property. The additional will be access through a pass-through through the dining room, which will be also used as a laundry room and mudroom space. This home was built in the, it was actually transferred from Main Street to Dunleavy back in the 30s. And it was, it's a smaller home. It does not have applicable storage. Laundry's currently located in the basement and for resale, but also usage purposes, the, the home needs an additional bathroom and accessible laundry in the main level. And that is the applicant in front of the board tonight.
Are you currently residing there, Mr. Needen?
Physically, yes. I am here. Yep, this is my primary residence. I've owned the home since 2018.
I don't have a lot of questions in regards to this issue. Does anybody on the board have a lot of questions or have any questions?
If I may, I have one, just one or two to help, help us along.
Please, Jack.
Okay, Mr. Needen, the location of the addition, is that the best location for, for what you want? Okay? And the parking, you're, you're doing your best to move that back behind, as far back off there, out of the front yard as possible, but some of it does tail off into the front yard. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And that's the best location for parking as well, where you're putting it in the application?
It is.
Okay, and those two items then be based on, possibly based on, or probably based on the shape size and location of the existing structure on the property, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I also noticed that you have a white vinyl fence that it seems to like stretch all the way across between the two homes, yours and your neighbors. Is that correct, Mr. Needon?
It is to the side yard setback on the south side of the property. That fence in question will be moved and replaced with a metal fence, or aluminum fence, excuse me, as part of this application.
Does that cross onto your neighbor's property?
It does not. There is approximately one foot of space between my neighbor's house and the end of that fence. As shown on the site plan.
So you're right on the property edge, is that correct?
Where that fence is shown on the south side, yes.
Any questions from the board?
I don't have anything.
No, nor do I. Donna, do you have any questions? I think you're muted.
Okay, hi, Donna Miller. So Mr. Needon, I just wanted to clarify that you're going to move the fence back to the rear building wall? It'll be in line with the back wall of the house?
Yes.
Okay, and then let me just see, and you're not going to actually pave like a full width driveway, you're just going to do the parking straps for the wheels?
That's correct.
Just for a little more clarity for the record. Not sure if Doug has anything to say about drainage?
I was going to mention, are you going to put any gutters on the new structure you're putting on the back of your house, Mr. Needon? Will you direct the water away from your neighbors is our primary concern?
Yes, I plan to drain it towards the rear of my property.
Okay. I have no further questions. Doug, do you have any questions for Mr. Needon?
I don't.
No questions for me.
All right, if the board doesn't have any further questions, I'll open it up to the public. If the public has any questions, please hit the raise the hand button. And direct your questions to Mr. Needon's testimony.
I do not show any hands raised at this time, so there are no public questions.
Okay. Then we will move, we will close for any public questions for Mr. Needon. We'll open it up for comment on this application. Either for or against.
Anyone, Irina? You're muted.
I do not show any hands raised by the public.
Okay, motion to close.
Motion to close public comment?
Second?
Second, Jill Potter, second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public comment closed.
So, does anyone have, anyone on the board have any comments either in favor or against this particular application?
Chris, I can go. I don't, you know, see any problem with this because literally the front yard minimum, you know, it's not getting worse. It's existing at 16.3, it's proposed. The side yard is 3.5. That's staying the same. It makes sense to want a two bathroom with three bedrooms. And as long as the stormwater is directed not on his neighbor, I don't have a problem with it.
And I tend to agree with all those statements, Brittany.
As a, just as a point of order, so far I would have, I've put in the reference to the applicant indicating that the fence is going to be relocated to the rear of this, I think it's front setback line, Donna, is that correct? Was that was the answer to your question? No?
No, no, no. It's to the rear building line.
Rear building line. Okay, thank you.
And.
And it's going to be four feet, right, as opposed to five feet?
Yes.
That is correct.
Got it. Okay.
And the water drainage will be directed away from his neighbors?
Correct.
So based on those particular conditions, I'll make a motion to approve the application for 830 Dunlue Street.
Dan, second? Is that correct?
I'm sorry, I have a motion by Christopher Avaloni and a second by Russell Lewis. Was that correct?
Okay.
No?
We did it at the same time.
Okay. All right, Daniel Harris, how do you vote?
Yes.
Brittany Ashman?
Yes.
Tim Slick?
Yes.
Jill Potter?
Yes.
Wendy Glassman?
Yes.
Russell Lewis?
Yes.
And Christopher Avaloni?
Yes.
Application approved unanimously.
Congratulations, Mr. Needon. Thank you.
Very much. I appreciate it.
Congratulations.
All right, have a great evening.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
So, does everybody, does anybody want to take like a five-minute break, or do they want to go on? Yes?
Two seconds.
Okay, I'll make a motion to take a five-minute recess.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five-minute recess beginning now.
Okay.
Ah, there he is. All right, welcome back, everyone.
Get some more seltzer.
Okay, I will take roll call and let's all return. Mr. Harris?
Yeah.
Brittany Ashman?
Yeah.
Tim Slick?
Here.
Jill Potter?
Here.
Wendy Glassman?
Here.
Bonnie Knock?
Bonnie, you're muted.
Sorry, here.
Thank you. Russell Lewis?
Here.
And Christopher Avaloni?
Here.
Thank you, everyone. Welcome back.
All right, moving on, our next application is Mr. Ramal at 1212 Sunset Avenue. Welcome back, Mr. Ramal.
Thank you. Hi, guys. Hello.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Ramal and the gentleman next to you, would you please raise your right hands?
Yes.
You solemnly swear the testimony about to given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, we do.
Yes, I do.
Yes, I do.
Each of you, please state your name for the record. I know that Mr. Ramal is the applicant and the other gentleman can tell us his affiliation with the project.
Okay, my name is Arun Ramal, A-R-U-N-R-I-M-A-L. And the address is 1212 Sunset Avenue.
Okay.
So.
I'm Salvatore Corvino, the architect and planner, 111 Brookfield Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey.
And we've heard your credentials the last time, Mr. Corvino, so we accept your credentials from our last meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, gentlemen. Okay. I'm sorry, I did the same thing before. Let's get Donna and our engineer sworn in in case you want to engage in discussion. Doug and Donna, please raise your right hands again. Solemnly swear the testimony about to given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Okay, please again, state your names for the record and your affiliation with the board.
Donna Miller, Clark Cadenhens, Board Planner.
Doug Clalland, Insight Engineering, Board Engineer.
Thank you. Okay.
All right, Mr. Ramal, Mr. Corvino, it's your show.
Okay, thank you very much for making us, having us make this presentation today. We are back again. This is basically at 1212 Sunset Avenue, we are proposing to build a two-story addition in the back of the building. And drawings were submitted and we have received some comments now, and also garage into the rear of the building also is included in it. And I'll have Mr. Corvino go through some of the.
Before you have Mr. Corvino explain the plans, Mr. Ramal, I just wanted to ask you a question. I saw in the packet that was provided to us that you purchased the home with an easement, is that correct?
Right.
Can you describe what the easement is?
The easement is a four-foot, four-foot easement shared with our neighbor at 1210. And that easement was, and is for the garage in the back of the yard. If I think I also provided you with a document of previous old survey that indicated that there used to be a garage at 1210, the next door neighbor, which I think was demolished after the new owner who bought this house, I think 2015 or 2014, they demolished that. But that was always a driveway, maintained as a driveway and then.
Whose driveway was it, Mr. Ramal? Was it 1212s or 1210s?
It was shared driveway.
It was a shared driveway?
Shared driveway, but the survey indicates the garage being there for 1210, but I'm assuming that the garage was there for the 1212 as well for previous owners.
So you're saying that the garage was used by both properties?
No, I mean, the driveway was used by the both properties.
Okay, but where did, where did the 1212 car go? Just.
That, I will not be able to answer that question because the previous tenant who living there, they were rental property, they never parked anything in the back there. They parked everything on the street.
So what was the easement for then? I'm not quite sure.
At, may I?
Yes.
Basically, is this a cross easement agreement between the two property owners?
Yes.
Individually, each lot does not have sufficient width for a driveway, correct?
Exactly.
Okay, so you have a cross easement agreement, they can use your side, you can use their side?
Right.
And that's for access to the rear of your properties in order to park in whatever garage facilities either of you may have had?
Yes. It's very similar to the one that's on 1216 and 1218.
Okay, do you, the agreement, the recorded easement agreement, do you have that?
I, we submitted that, the pages of that to you as part of the documents.
Okay, I'll get that from Irina.
So that easement, how much space is between your two properties that there's a driveway?
Eight feet.
Eight feet, and you want to put a garage now in the back of your home? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right, please proceed.
Sure. So, so the proposed addition at the rear, at the ground floor would entail approximately about 18 feet in depth, a total of 324 square feet. And then a rear deck that extends approximately, I think it's 10 feet, 14 feet by 10 feet, sorry, I'm reading a small drawing. And then an extension of the driveway and paved area to the garage beyond that, about 22 feet past the and the proposed addition at the second floor would entail a similar, similar extension that's about 18 feet in depth with a small balcony off the bedroom overhang at the rear. The improvements would include a, aside from the interior alterations to improve the kitchen, new kitchen, add a small powder room with, I'm sorry, three-quarter bathroom with a shower and a an open plan for living space. It also includes the addition of the master bedroom at the rear and some other interior alterations at the second floor. There would be a air conditioning condenser that also would be placed at the rear. At the prior set of drawings that were submitted, we also had a balcony at the front that we eliminated to eliminate that variance and not change the roofline at the front to try to conform and maintain the bungalow style design of the roof.
Before you go on any further, Mr. Ramal, let me ask Irina, Irina, are you able to put up any of those drawings that Mr. Ramal is referring to?
Yes, I can put up the drawings, but you'll have to let me know what, what page you're referring to and where you'd like me to.
It's A101, Irina.
Okay, thank you. Right, go ahead and continue while I.
This is just the floor plan layout. We're modifying the rear portion of the existing house along with the 18-foot addition to accommodate a larger kitchen with an island, a pantry, a bathroom with a shower, and a eating portion, eating section of the kitchen at the rear off with access to the deck through a porch door. And the second floor would be modified to accommodate a master bedroom bath with walk-in closets and a master bedroom. A portion of that being in the original house and the rest being in the addition. The, if you go to drawing S, I'm sorry, Z001, that shows the existing and proposed site plan. Expansion of first floor entails a 324-square-foot addition at the rear to an existing 684-square-foot ground floor with an additional approximately 180-square-foot front, existing front porch. The second floor entails a larger, slightly larger addition, 511. If it's setback, a portion of it is setback at the rear. And that addition would be, would entail, so the first floor would be 1,008 square foot total. The second floor, 1168. The second floor overhangs the front porch by approximately four feet, three, three to four feet. The front porch would be maintained. The, the rear would also include that second-story balcony, about three foot in depth over the portion of the rear deck. The garage would be 240-square-foot single-car garage at the, towards the rear of the property, approximately 20, 22 feet from the rear portion of the deck. That easement would be improved. Extend the addition. It's paved on the neighbor's side right now, and we would pave the, my client's half of that driveway to restore the drive. There is an existing apron at the front that already has curb cut. And.
You say paved, you mean asphalt, Mr. Corvino?
Right now, it's just gravel.
Right now, right now, it's just the concrete, but we, the neighbor has a brick pavement on it, so we want to mask that so that it stays uniform.
Wait, wait, say that again. Sorry.
The. The neighbor's half of the property has a brick paver system. And ours is just concrete, so we're going to remove the concrete and match the brick paver system so that it looks uniform.
And how far back?
Rather than half concrete and half paper.
And how far does that, does the neighbor's pavers go?
It goes right up to the property line, it's four feet, and we would do our half, our four feet.
I'm sorry, how far back on their property?
It goes, it goes that 90-foot easement depth.
No, it doesn't quite go.
It doesn't go that far, but.
Yeah, it goes, it goes to the back of their, up to the back of their house, which is slightly less than 90 feet.
Is that an impervious type of brick that you'll be using?
Right, it's going to be, yeah, it's calculated as a part of the impervious.
Yeah.
That's creating a lot of impervious area.
Yes, it actually, we are under the.
Yeah, we, we still meet the impervious coverage quite a bit, so we're still within our limits. We have a very deep lot, although it's narrow, it's got a very large lot area towards the, you know, we almost meet the lot area requirement with the depth of the lot.
If I could, Irina, could you bring up page A502? And just sort of zoom in and orient to the bottom middle of the page, there's a photograph of the easement area that shows bricks.
Yeah, just give me one second, I'm sorry. This one?
Yes.
Okay, so if you look at the driveway, yes, driveway easement, the neighbor's paving goes from the apron four feet out to the property line, up to the rear of his house. Arun, my client would, and we have a small paved area that matches that, but we would infill that pavement uniform from the apron all the way to the 90-foot easement mark, and Arun would actually.
So I understand.
Neighbor's, neighbor's property as well.
Mr. Ramal, you're going to have to back out the length of that driveway between those two buildings?
And what's currently in that picture on your neighbor's property? Is that an HVAC or is that a trash can? I can't quite tell.
There, I think the HVAC sticks out probably by about six to eight inches.
But it shouldn't be that.
That should not be the case because it's, again, it's the easement that should be all clear. That should not be the case, because it's, again, it's the easement that should be all clear. And.
So he had a conversation with his neighbor to relocate it.
When, when we moved in, we had talked to them about that being the driveway, and they are aware of what we intend to do about it.
So, y- you feel confident that you would never ever hit either structure backing out?
I, I think we, we feel, I feel confident, yes.
He's got a small car.
I, I mean, I drive a very small car, I don't drive big.
I would hope so, I.
So I have a Mini that can go in and out without any problem.
I, 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 I just find that very tight.
Uh, the.
Well, I, I gotta, I gotta tell you, there is a paved, uh, we widen the paved area at the rear, and um, I, I believe that, uh, with a small car, you might be able to maneuver and turn the car around. Um, when you back out of the garage, or if you want.
If you don't, yeah, exactly. And then again, uh, uh, this is not the first one, if you go to the house, like, two houses over on two, on twelve sixteen and twelve eighteen, they have identical scenario in their house, that they share driveway and that they have the garage in the back.
But, but, Mr. Ramal, we're not talking about what your neighbors have, just what you have. And what you're asking for.
It was, it's, it's a precedent that I'm telling you about.
No, no, there's no precedent, i- i- this is based on each applicant individually.
The, one, one other factor here is because I would like to, uh, park the car in the rear is in this particular area, when you're coming off the bridge street, uh, the cars come in at a very high speed and it's a curve, and, uh, I was told by the previous tenant who used to live there that there have been some accidents because of the car coming and hitting, so leaving the car in the street is not, I don't feel safe about it.
So, so your neighbor, when you purchased your home, you told them your intention was to put a garage in the back and be able to drive your car to the back of these houses, is that correct?
Yeah, and we have been saying that from.
Is your neighbor here that he can verify that?
Well, I mean, I've, she's, she was notified, but she, I, I don't know whether she.
I, I mean, you're speaking for your neighbor, I'm not sure that, you know, I would accept the fact that you're saying that she knows, or she, uh, 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 getting that second or third hand is not appropriate.
Uh, the way I'm looking at it, uh, is, uh, we have an easement, uh, agreement between the neighbor, and the easement.
But that's not an easement for a driveway or for a, it's to use the, the particular space between the properties, but it doesn't state that you could put a garage behind your home.
Have you read the easement agreement, Christopher?
I have it.
I've read it. I was gonna say, can we, I don't know much about driveway easements, what exactly?
I need, I need to see it, I, I'll be the one to tell you, I'll, I'll give you the interpretation on that. Since it's a legal document and it should be, be interpreted by an attorney.
Absolutely.
There it is.
Do you want me to put it up, or?
How many pages is it, I don't want to be here. All right, that's the.
Can you see?
That's the acknowledgement at the end, that, I don't think that's the beginning, I think that's the end. Okay. Can't. Okay, let me see here, where there's just common driveway.
It is a driveway.
Yeah, but I can't see the whole thing, because the, the photos are in the way, the, the videos are in the way.
Um, you can move them down.
Yeah, you can move the box, or if you click on the, on the first line at the top of the black box where the photos are, it'll minimize it to just one.
Oh, okay, hold on. Okay, let me just see what it says, there's just common driveway separating.
I did send it to you.
In the paragraph, the grant of right of way.
Yeah.
Jack then refers to vehicles in, in the fourth, well, fifth line.
Like, I'm trying, it's, it's now minimized.
Jack, Jack, just check your email, I believe Donna sent it to you.
When?
Just now.
Oh, okay.
That'll be easier.
I'll check my emails. Which, uh, email address, Donna?
We, Pyrojack.
Okay. I'm trouble, I'm having trouble getting to it.
Uh, it does state with vehicles.
Eight feet wide, provide for mutual use and enjoyment, said driveways respective parties. All right, clearly use of the driveway is for vehicles. But what?
To a depth of ninety feet.
Yep. Provided, however, that no automobile shall be allowed to remain parked on said driveway. You can't park according, that's, that's between the parties, that's, that's the terms of the easement. Okay, from what I can see, it appears that in fact there is an, this, this driveway easement has been in existence for quite some time, it's a cross easement. Each party gets four feet, they're contribu- they're contributing, uh, for use as a driveway for vehicles to get access to the rear. You cannot park in the driveway according to, uh, the terms of the easement agreement.
But what about that point where it says otherwise to a depth of ninety feet?
I'm trying to find that.
That's in that same paragraph, right after the vehicles. Freely pass over and repass on foot or with vehicles, or otherwise to that, a depth of ninety feet.
Yeah, so, so it would go, we, we would be a length of ninety feet.
And no further.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Right.
And that's shown on the plan.
We're, we're proposing to turn, turn off after the ninety feet, and I, I know there's a slight overlap onto the other property, but we, we have a suggestion to, uh, alleviate that, we can make a modification at the rear, so that we're not going onto the neighbor's property beyond the ninety feet, or it would be on our property after the ninety feet.
Okay, which would be correct, you couldn't encroach on their, on, your easement doesn't exist beyond that point, and if you, you use their property, you'd be encroaching. Couldn't prove that.
Yes.
All right. I get it.
Um, so, e- essentially, it gives them the right to put a driveway there, is that correct, Jack?
Yes, between the parties, yeah, then, if there's no relief, if there's no, Donna would know better than me, if there's no, uh, variance relief needed for the driveway, or it's design exception needed for the driveway, uh, then it's a permitted driveway, and, uh, certainly there's an agreement, mutual agreement between the parties.
Okay, so that, it's kind of a, except for the idea of having an impervious amount of coverage, that would be the only thing that we could possibly address, is that correct?
The problem with that is, is that you've got one party that is not a party to this action, and you can't, they can't have an, they, they have to have a pervious surface, and then the other party would have a new, a pervious surface, and, uh, that's up to you whether you want to do that or not.
I understand, okay.
Hang on, Donna, so, Chris, to answer your question though, uh, on page seven of our report, um, you know, I describe how, uh, the ordinance doesn't specifically have dimensional standards for single and two-family dwellings, but it does provide, um, that, you know, you have to prove that it works, that it's safe. Um, and, and that's thirty fifty-nine twelve A, so, um, you know, I don't know if Doug's gonna jump in at some point on this, but, um, you know, what they've shown to us from our perspective, we don't think it actually functions. You know, it's great that Mr. Ramal currently has a small car, but this is forever, and so if the city grants approval, we have to make sure that it's gonna work forever for whoever comes after, whether they have a Mini or they have something larger.
I, I, I totally agree, I, I personally don't find this particularly safe. Um, not that, you know, somebody would be driving at a seventy miles per hour down the driveway, or, or backing up that way, but I, it just seems so tight a space to have a vehicle, and then to give uh, the right to having property, cars to go to the back of the home, this is going with the property forever, so I, I'm very unsure of this particular aspect of this application.
I have to agree with you, Chris.
What's the?
Um, this is Bonnie, I, um, I, I appraise a lot of old homes, and I, what I, what I find a lot of times is old converted garages to sheds, because back then, they used to build garages that were eight feet wide, because the cars were smaller, and now they're rendered useless, because an eight-foot garage, you're not getting an SUV or a bigger car into it. So, I can't imagine getting a car, a Mini might fit, but as Donna said, I, I can't imagine trying to get another car down there, or getting, getting it in might be one thing, but getting it out is gonna be another.
I, I, I just find backing out ninety feet
Yeah.
i- i- is really tremendously, uh, problematic. Uh, uh, especially if someone is to have a drink or two, and I know that may not be you, Mr. Ramal, but you may have a, a guest that may have had imbibed some, and I, I, I'm a little concerned that backing out of this driveway would be very difficult. I, 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 I know you have an easement, but a- as Donna has stated, I think you have to prove to us that, that this is gonna work. I, 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 I personally don't agree that it will.
Wouldn't our minimum driveway width apply to this? It wouldn't, the.
No, because it's a single and, uh, it's a single story, or a single family doesn't apply.
It exempts single and two-family dwellings.
So technically, he's allowed to create this driveway, and technically, you're allowed to use it to move cars, and it doesn't need to be a certain size, but what Donna, the driveway doesn't need to be a certain width, but what Donna is saying is the exception is, it needs to show that it's safe, and I think what the board is expressing is that we don't have enough evidence of that, at, with these, with this current application, at least that's what I'm hearing, and I have to agree.
Could we, could we, uh, is it possible for us to show that we could, uh, maybe modify it so that we could do a K-turn at the back?
Um.
Allow it to make a turn.
Well, how, how, would, would you have a transportation managers that develop some type of, I, I mean, how would you do that, Mr. Corvino? I, 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 you know.
You need an engineer.
You need an engineer to show you that.
Well.
Right.
I mean, there is room on the property, he doesn't have to have the garage where he's proposing it now. A little bit more elbow room, but, you know, it's, it's the actual distance between the buildings, and the fact that the easement only extends to ninety feet, so it, you know, with their proposed addition, you know, they can't really even squeak by their own, their own building.
Yeah, we were.
So, so, you know, there's a lot of pieces to this making it.
Which is why I started with the whole driveway aspect.
Right.
Uh, uh, because the driveway is gonna dictate that the, the actual expansion in the back of the home. I, you know, I, I really didn't want to start anywhere but there first, because we need some type of clarification on how this is gonna work.
Sounds to me like you've got an engineering issue. It has to be proven that engineering-wise, a car can go back there, make the turn that you're requesting on their own property and come back out facing front instead of being backed out. Doug, what do you have to say?
Yeah, so, um, there's a couple things at play here, and we reviewed, we reviewed the application for stormwater compliance. Um, a lot of the driveway things we're talking about tonight, I'm seeing for the first time, but I, I tend to agree, so let me just kind of lay it out there, um. The threshold for minor developments in Asbury Park is one thousand square feet of new impervious surface or five thousand square feet of land disturbance. Um, I can pretty definitively, definitively say that they're not disturbing five thousand square feet of land, but it would appear that based on the numbers provided by the applicant, that they're providing eighty-four square feet more than one thousand, so one thousand eighty-four. Um, and I'm not at, in, in any regard trying to design the project, but, um, if that were reduced to below, uh, one thousand square feet, um, you know, by definition in the ordinance, the applicant would not need to comply with the requirements for a minor development. Um, you know, which would inclu- include stormwater mitigation, um, soils testing, uh, so on and so forth. And if it was reduced below that, the only requirement in Asbury's ordinance is, uh, basically protect neighboring properties. Um, you know, to prove that there is no increase of stormwater runoff to any adjacent properties. Um, but that all comes into play, because, you know, if it sounds like, and I agree, that, you know, it, it's difficult to back down an eight-foot wide corridor. Um, you know, the typical car is about six feet wide, um, I think it can pull in pretty safely. Um, but I, I, I think it would, you know, turning around in the rear yard somehow, I, I think, uh, would do a, a great deal of good to make sure you could safely get back out. Um, you know, but that would involve some reconfiguration and, you know, it, it might, it might require more impervious surface, so there's a couple things at play here, but, uh, just wanted to throw my thoughts out there for everybody.
I appreciate that, Doug. Um, so I'm not convinced that we can proceed until we have a better idea, uh, what we're going to do, or how are you going to approach this driveway aspect with a garage, Mr. Ramal? Either you're going to redesign, uh, your expansion in the back, or you're going to get some type of convincing engineering, uh, uh, design for us to see how you would be able to turn a car around and drive out, uh, facing, as opposed to reverse, uh, driving down the ninety-foot driveway, which I don't think is very safe at all.
Just, I mean, would a visual demonstration help?
A visual?
Yeah, I mean, really, they just, um, video, um, record someone driving in, turning around and driving out.
No, uh, Dan, they would require actual plans to show that.
I know, I know about the plans, but I'm talking about it with the plan.
Well, but that, that's, like, that could, somebody could do that the first time, but not do it ten times, do what I'm saying, that's not really.
Doug, is there some sort of, uh, program, uh, computer program that would do that? Then that would be give, that would, I think that's what Dan's talking about.
I, I think we, we, we could, um, reconfigure the addition, the deck, and the paving first, try to stay under the thousand, and to try to show an engineering, uh, diagram or, uh, uh, turning for a turn in there, even if it meant repositioning garage slightly, or shortening the deck, or even, uh, reducing the bathroom in the addition to allow a little easier, and, and maybe the, uh, the rear, the rear portion of the addition to allow a little moving, so.
Yeah, I actually had a question on that, I've been looking through all the different files, and I can't really see where is the existing building stopping and the expansion of the building starting.
Um. Yeah, it might be a little.
Irene, is there a way you can point on the screen? I think I know where it is.
Yeah, the original, um. Yeah, the, basically, the, uh, and I apologize, because the, the wall isn't dotted in that was removed, but the, uh, yeah, existing is where, I'm trying to see it on the first one, show it on the first one. So the uh that the existing, I'm not sure if I can show it. If you see where the uh
The shower.
The shower is in the bathroom. The face of the not the wall, not the rear of the shower, but the front of the shower is where the original building
Ends.
Ends. It should have been dotted in there, but it's not shown.
Is this where you're?
No, the the front of the shower.
Where you show.
Move over about three feet to the.
No, the, I'm sorry.
That's the original, the end of the building was really there. We opened it up, so the wall's not there, but we should have dotted in the uh
Is it where the
Yes.
The door is.
Heavy line is.
Right, the way you show the wall, yeah, that's correct.
Right there.
That's about it.
So you're.
To the rear of the building, yeah.
So all the way down to where it looks like the stove is, right? That's all.
Correct.
Okay, and then all to the rear, that's all new.
Yep, that's.
So I think.
We could reconfigure that bathroom to cut that back a little.
I was gonna say, if there's a way you can maybe bring it, bring the kitchen, you know, uh sorry, directions down some, so I think that might give you more um leverage and uh.
And I think I could even move the air conditioner to the back.
I was exactly what I was gonna say. I would not put that, yeah.
Yeah, so the question is whether or not I could keep the paving under a thousand and still be able to do a K turn there in front of the garage, so. I'd have to reconfigure that and see how that works.
Thank you, Mr. Corvino.
And Jack, just to answer your question, there are um we use uh AutoCAD has a vehicle turning program. I'm sure there's others out there, but uh you know, something that can be put on a plan that could visually show the entire movement of a vehicle um coming onto the property, turning around or going into the garage, turning around, whichever happens first, and then uh pulling back out of the driveway.
Okay. I think that's what the board's looking to see, something graphically uh with dimensions and proof that it works. Is that correct, Mr. Evil?
Yes, I I'd feel a little bit more comfortable uh proceeding with the application if we could get some of this uh understood a little bit better regarding the driveway. I I I have a lot of concerns.
But I guess I still have another question that there may be a way because of of the way the applicant is going to configure the back of this property that his car may be able to maneuver, but it's a shared driveway and the neighbor has the same right to pull in and back out of that driveway. They may not have the same sized car. Um, they may not have the same maneuverability and potentially it's creating, it's creating a hazard that I don't know if the applicant's willing to accept that the the neighbor might be taking out a shingle or something here and there as he is also using that very narrow driveway.
I I agree totally, Wendy. I I I, that's why, you know, it it's unfortunate that we don't have the neighbor here to discuss.
It doesn't matter, though. It doesn't matter. It's irrelevant because.
It's irrelevant because the neighbor, right now, if they decided to pave this, they could use it.
Yes. And to that point, the our applicant and the the owner bought this property knowing that easement, so it's it's a mute point at this.
No, no, I I agree with you, Brit Britney, but 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 it's a that it in a way Wendy's making a valid point.
Right, but it's out of our control.
But I guess the only the only point that I'm bringing up is yes, okay, that easement existed. It was an easement to be used as a driveway to move vehicles. Um, but in if we were to approve this at this point, we are potentially exacerbating the a condition that it that existed to a greater extent. I and it may be absolutely irrelevant, may not be our place to say, but.
I I get what you're saying, but it's it I don't, and Jack, correct me if I'm wrong, but.
You're on the right track.
It doesn't.
Okay.
This isn't a zoning issue. This is an easement that we can't. But what we can control, when I would like to see if, you know, you decide to reconfigure this is where that ninety feet ends. Because that's what we can control. They can't go past that ninety feet of that easement of the shared driveway. And I would like to see if they're going past that ninety feet to make their K turn work.
Plus, with the, think of it this way, with the applicant coming before you, you have the opportunity to improve a situation that if the applicant wasn't before us would be problematic or could be very well problematic for both parties.
I appreciate that, Jack. You're quite correct. And and Mr. Mr. Ramal coming here to discuss all of this is greatly appreciated.
Yeah.
And I do have, I I have to also say, Mr. Ramal, we appreciate all the changes you've already made. Please keep in mind that we understand that completely. So while we we're just at this point trying to make, trying to protect both yourself and your neighbor in this situation.
Uh, so having said that, and if we have to come back to show you the driveway and paving modifications to see about the garage, could we still proceed with the other items? And and if that doesn't work, obviously we can't have the garage, but is it something we can continue work of?
Uh, you can't split it up like that.
The rest of the items or?
It's all part of, it's all part of the variance application. You can't split it up. It's not like it's a site plan with variances and you want to proceed with the variances first.
I'm not looking for approval. I'm just wondering if we want to uh in case something else comes up with some of the other items, we want to discuss that. At what level at this point? We don't want to come back, but I I'm just, I don't want something else to come up. Get it put off again. That's all I'm saying.
But you already have to reconfigure the the addition in order to um make more room.
Right, and it's only.
And move the H back.
Of it, so we're only going to reduce it at that point, both the deck and part of the house, so.
Um, hi, this this is Russell Lewis. I can tell you that I was going to question you on the the purpose and the use of that three foot second floor deck.
Yep.
Um, that's something I can tell you that I'm not a fan of and I would just need some um testimony on your end of why you're looking for that on the second floor, if you wanted to address that? Because that's certainly something that I would, if you come back with that, I I would ask that question.
Okay, I mean, the 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 reason, again, the the reason for the second floor balcony is basically it's a southern facing side of the house and, you know, having a balcony on the side sitting out is a, you know, pleasant experience. That's the reason for it. It's right outside the bedroom. And it's in the rear of the house.
I understand where it's located, but you're also proposing an outdoor deck outside of your kitchen. So you're utilizing and using this southern exposure of your home. I'm wondering why you are, what's the intent? So you're planning on hanging out? You put what furniture or chairs? I'll tell you what my concern is, is now you you can now see into your neighbor's yard, your neighbors can see you. It's a second floor elevated living, outdoor living space.
Okay.
I would just, if you had a view, you know, if you were living on the lake or there was a purpose for that, I could understand that. We have, we've seen many second floor decks in homes here where there's unobstructed views and there you're not um negatively impacting into your neighbor's yard. So I'm just curious what your use would be for that.
Okay, I I hadn't thought about looking out in the neighbor's yard. Aspect of it is mainly for the balcony outside the master bedroom. Uh, yes.
Well, that's part of the reason why we're here. We're here to look at those, look at those things, the impact you have into your neighbors and the neighbors' impact that they have, you know.
Yeah. Now, if I can, Russell, where are you done? I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, to kind of support what Russell's saying, we see this a lot in the applications that you put in, you know, your neighbor puts in a second story balcony. Well, now they can see onto your property where they couldn't previously. That's a concern. Secondly, you are building a beautiful deck in the backyard on the first floor. I mean, it's not like you won't have ample outdoor space, so um, you know, that's on ground level, which is a lot less intrusive to your neighbors. So I agree with Russell. I think although it would be beautiful, um, I don't know if it's necessary.
We see this, we we see this more in two-family um applicants where the second floor is its own thing and they want to give that unit some outdoor space. Or we see houses that are, again, up against the lake where no other uh intrusion uh from from that second floor. So it's just, it's just something that I do question.
Okay.
And I I'll second that as well, Russell. I agree. I'm not quite sure the necessity of having the second floor balcony when you're already putting a a back deck on on the house.
Okay, no, well, then we'll consider reconsider that when we come back for.
If you want, if you want the doors and you want something to open that up and you want to put a Juliet balcony, those, you know, then that's a whole different thing. If you want to open the back of your house up, windows and air and flow and, you know, all of that, but it's the it's the three foot extension that I am not satisfied with at this point. I understand why you want to put an extension on and everything you want to do is, you know, completely understandable. Um, anyway, that's the only other thing, and I just wanted to bring that up since you asked if there was anything else that we saw, I just wanted to give you that courtesy because that if you came back with your K drive and everything and and that balcony was still there, I was going to ask you about that. So just under, just know that.
So it would be, we'd be okay with say like a rail about a foot out from the or six inches out from the.
I don't think there should be any.
Set of doors.
I don't, there's any room for a body to be.
Yeah.
Standing on the second floor of this home, considering how close it is to the neighbors.
Russell, you might want to define what a Juliet balcony is because I don't think everyone knows.
Yeah, you know.
I don't know that I would be able to um give.
We understand.
I understand. I don't understand.
Mr. Corvino should know.
Yes, he understands.
I admit the, I admit more of the board members because it's an architecture and design thing, but essentially it's like when it stores or it's windows that like a sliding door, but you can't actually walk out on it. So it's just like you can get that visual of having an outdoor space, but you can't actually go outside and stand, which I think is what Russell's trying to say is what he doesn't like. So they're also, I think they're also known as fringe balconies. But yeah, they don't, so they look like a balcony from inside, but you cannot actually go out. It's like plus to the building.
Right, the the rail is right up against the building.
Correct. It's a way to get, it's a way to get light and air into a elevated floor without having a person be able to walk in the on the exterior of the building.
Yes, that is very.
Okay.
We will, we will, we will make the adjustment to that.
Um. I, um, Arun is also trying to restore some of the siding. This house is covered with with uh
Vinyl.
Vinyl siding and we're going to take that off and go with a uh, are you going to require samples of these of the siding and the uh?
Is there, I I think the best way to put it is the the design standards that we have uh in each neighborhood, actually, Mr. Corvino. Um, that, you know, Donna can provide those di, those particular design standards.
No, I I have them and I and I had a question for Donna on that, just a clarification. Uh, and please understand, we do want to try to restore this house. We're going to match the railing at the, that's on the front porch with the railing uh on the new portions in the rear, which does comply with that standard. Uh, we are trying to restore some of the original aesthetics to the house. My question, Donna, was just a clarification, having said that. Uh, the applicability of those design standards indicate that it's for residential historic districts. And it's clear that we're not in a historic district. Am I, am I wrong?
Yeah, you're wrong. The um, the ordinance actually makes a clarification that anything that's in the R1 is deemed um, a residential historic district. It's not a registered listed district type of thing. It's a local designation. Um, I don't need samples. Just give us a really nice tight spec on the siding.
Very good, no problem. I I don't have any problem being.
And the color. And then it's going to be the entire exterior is going to be all uniform.
Yes.
Yes.
Fabulous.
We'll use a lap siding of, it'd be a hardy plant. Uh, we'll match trim, we'll try to uh replicate the new windows to match uh I'm not even sure these existing windows are really that great.
Existing windows are totally gone.
We'll, we'll find the, I'll get a cut sheet on the windows, so at least know what kind of window we're providing. And the railing will match the front porch, which is that square style, um, except that we will make, raise the height of the rail to meet the new code. That porch railing is a little low. That will remain at the the deck will be the floor.
If I can just uh kind of mirror what Donna was saying there, I think if you just like include those like the specs and the details, this is something that we would want to see in writing. Um, you can verbally say you do it, but I think if, you know, if, and we hope you do come back, if you can include that, that would help us too.
Absolutely, okay. All right, guys, thank you.
So uh what?
If I could just, sorry, one more thing, stop. Um, as I scroll through the report, um, and get us a a good detail on the fence uh and the gate.
Yes.
Um, to clarify that, uh, and then um if you're going to match the railing, that should eliminate that seption, just me. Right.
Yeah, I think you had it at, so.
So yeah, so that, okay, so that's very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Anybody else on the board have any other further comments for Mr. Corvino or Mr. Ramal? All right, Jack, so how do we approach this? Should we allow the public to question them or should we?
Because you're going to bring them back.
Right.
You're gonna go, you're gonna start all over again and the public will have their opportunity. Let's get the final plan before the board.
Right.
As to where it's going to look like, and then the witnesses are going to be res sworn and testify. And then the public will have ample opportunity to question the witnesses.
That's fine by me.
Comments on the final product as opposed to, we'll just be doing the same thing over and over again.
Right, okay. Donna, you have something further?
I was just gonna say, what if the neighbor is in the audience, then we get better input on the driveway perspective?
I I can't answer that. What do you think, Jack?
You open it up to the neighbor, then you're going to open it up to everybody else, and that's up to you.
I have a feeling.
Neighbor here, can we, well, let's get, let's end the mystery. Is the neighbor there?
I don't think it, is anybody?
Donna, uh, uh, Arena?
I don't.
Yes, that, no, is anybody, is the neighbor here?
I don't see um anyone but but.
It's Matthew Daniels.
He's the only, he's the only person.
He's the only person. So I don't know if they represent or or live next door or.
He lives next door, Mr. Ramal.
Uh, yeah, they have their hands up.
Yeah, who is Matthew Daniels, Mr. Ramal? Is he the neighbor?
No, no.
Okay. Please, please unraise your hands. We were, we will not be taking any public questions or comments. We are only asking if the neighbor is in attendance.
Yeah, that gentleman will have his opportunity.
So no, they are not in attendance.
He will have his opportunity at a later time.
Yes, so when when the applicant comes back, we will open it up.
Okay.
And we will hopefully notify, right? I mean, that's.
No, you're gonna say, we'll take care of that, right? Before we leave this evening, we'll give him, we'll give you a specific date, time and place.
Okay.
Uh, there'll probably be no further notification, but that gentleman will have an opportunity to certainly come back.
Absolutely, thank you.
So, Irina, the next date would be?
The next date, we have available, yes, it's February eighth.
Is that too soon?
No, I think we'll be, I'm very eager to get this thing going, moving forward.
Are you sure, Mr. Corvino, that you could get that that study done for the K turn?
Everything has to be in ten days prior.
Yes.
Yeah, I have a traffic engineer I can speak to. I'll, I'll, yeah. I I believe we should get something.
We can get something, yeah, absolutely.
And the redesign and all that, you remember, it's got to be in ten days prior.
It's only two weeks from now.
It's got to be ten days prior, you got five days.
I don't think you need a traffic engineer, though. I don't want to spin you on the wrong, you need like an engineer.
They they know what they need.
Okay. Traffic engineer won't help.
Later.
No, we can't do it. It's gotta be a month.
Mr. Ramal, that means you would have to have everything in by the, by this, by the end of this week. Really?
What is the next date we have available after that?
Um, the next one after that is February 22nd.
I think we will, we will take that, February 22nd.
22nd, yeah, that'll be.
Okay. All right. So I'll make a motion to carry 1212 Sunset Avenue to February 22nd, 2022, without further notice.
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion by Christopher Avaloni and a second by Russell Lewis. Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Brittany Ashman?
Yes.
Tim Slick?
Yes.
Jill Potter?
Yes.
Wendy Glassman?
Yes.
Russell Lewis?
Yes.
And finally, Christopher Avaloni.
Yes.
Okay. Application carried to February 22nd, 2022, without further notice. And, um, uh, I believe that that meeting will, will still be virtual, um, unless further notice.
Thank you, Irina.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. And before we, I'm sorry, before we leave, um, I'm just going to place on the screen, uh, the instructions, um, for the next, uh, virtual meeting on February 8th, 2022. Um, it, it will be virtual and this information is also available on the city of Asbury Park website and the zoning board of adjustments, um, webpage. All right.
Thanks. Thank you, Irina. I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you. I have a motion by Christopher Avaloni and a second by Daniel Harris. All in favor?
Hi.
Anya Post? Thank you, everyone, and have a great evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Irina, I hope the baby feels better.
Thank you so much, Chris.
Hey, Irina, it's Jill.
Hi, Jill.
I, I did find the, um,
Oh, okay. Great. Do you want to hold that up?
My apologies. So I.
No worries, no worries. So, so, um, I think Jack is still here.
Yes, I am.
Okay, great. So Jill, do you want to hold that up?
I saw it. I should.
I showed it to him.
All right, great. Well, that's taken care of. All right. Thank you so much, everyone.
Moki doke.
Have a great.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.